I don't know, that's why I'm asking.
I think she is.
I don't know how to check on here.
I don't know.
It's not set up.
Kathy is kind of the neighborhood resource person.
She must see my little man, but it was busy times.
Get with Chris and he can get your city through there.
All right, good evening everyone and welcome to our council meeting. I haven't pulled out my gavel.
But we might.
I don't. I haven't used my gavel in a while, but I don't, I don't know, can you hear me? They say I do too much of that. All right, Madam Deputy Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Mr. Jacobs?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mrs. Klein?
Here.
Mr. Amos?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mrs. Juwan?
Here.
All right, thank you. Right now, if you could please remove your hats and join me in the moment of silence. All right, thank you. Interim City Engineer Jamie Knutson will lead us into pledge.
Please join me for the pledge.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented in the minutes of August 20th regular session with the correction. And these, this has already been corrected, but just for clarification, under resolutions, following the resolution setting the date of special election, there was a motion or a note that the resolution had been approved, which it had not been. So, I've already talked to the Assistant City Clerk, she has now corrected it, so that line will say, "Resolution assigned number 2018615."
All right, that motion's been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? We have an agenda. Right now is oral presentation time, if you would please come up and state your name and address for the record and let us know what your thoughts are this evening.
I want to know if the City Council knows that they have the right-
State your name and address, name and address for the record.
My name's Dwayne Hylers, 1205 Bishop Street. The City Council has authority to hire or fire the City Clerk or the City Attorney. And I think that the City Council should take that into their hand and consider it, that one of these people ain't doing their job.
All right, the, the, one of the parts of this, keep your comments germane and refrain from personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks, we're not having that tonight. Last week, you cussed four times, and I let it slide because you had, because you were passionate about it, but not tonight, not tonight, sir. So if you want to finish your thoughts-
I just named a position.
If you, if you, if you, if you keep your comments germane and respectful tonight, you can finish out the rest of your time, if not, Mr. Hylers, we're not having that tonight, I'm sorry. But please finish your thoughts.
My thought is, I went by the same property and nothing's done to them. My thought is, that they come over to my place and give me tickets and fines, but they don't do nothing. You wrote down the address of Eighteenth and Lafayette, and two doors away, there's unlicensed trucks sitting in the alley, no licenses on them or nothing. Yet, when you went over and towed my semi over on the end of Columbia Street, I had my license plates on it, I had my name, but my license plate was sixty days delinquent. So, the ones over here don't have any license plates, how come they're not being towed? How come the property on the corner with weeds this high is not being done? The same thing over and over. Right down on Lafayette, right across from Powers Company, there's a storage yard, weeds this high, broken down trucks, broken down trailers, right on Lafayette. Nothing's being done, city inspectors drive by that every day, every day, I follow them to the city here, they don't stop, they don't look. So it's the same thing, over and over.
Mr. Zellifer, please take a look at Eighteenth and Lafayette for unlicensed trucks or no plates, and please also take a look at the weeds complaint that he's made continuously about those properties, please take care of that or have someone in code enforcement go by and take a look at that tomorrow. Next up, is there anyone that would like to address the council?
Good evening, Council and viewers, Bruce T. Kazar, CRT Apartments Waterloo. I'd like you guys to come, schedule a tour and come in and visit one of the gems of Waterloo Sierra Valley area, that's the CRT Apartments, 106 East Third Street. We've got a lot of remodeling going on, a lot of innovations, a lot of energy, it's a very dynamic place, I just wish we'd be coming, catch the current feeling of the place and see what's going on there. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Hi, my name is Sue Vogel, I'm a lifetime resident of Waterloo, and I'm also a resident of Ward Five. I'm really disappointed in your voice, vote, voice, vote for the special election set for December 11th. I think you should have had it on November 6th to save money, or at least an October date. We are not being represented now, and it will be delayed now until December 11th and beyond if needed. It is unfair to us on Ward Five to be neglected like this. I am tired of the power struggle that the council is portraying, there is no reason for it to be delayed, you need to start working for all the citizens of Waterloo, not just for your own agendas.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Forrest Dilavu, 1725 Huntington Road, Waterloo, Iowa. I would also like to speak to the codes. I have brought up to this mayor and this council several times, a property on West Fifth Street, which the, excuse me, the city rents, that does not comply with the building code of downtown Waterloo. Nothing has been done, I have heard nothing about it, yet we continue to rent it for a thousand dollars a month. Around the corner is the American Legion. Those folks can't put on a roof because the type of roof they wanted to put on, they couldn't afford. So we're, we're not enforcing on the West Fifth building that we rent, so we are contributing to the person that is violating, we're contributing a thousand a month to that person that owns that building. While around the corner, one of the greatest veterans organizations in the United States, we refuse to let them put on a metal roof like the building next door has, or the building across the street has. You know, we, we just aren't fair. And yet, we are contributing a thousand a month taxpayer dollars to the person who violated, didn't pull a permit, put on plywood or Oriental Strand Board or whatever you call it, OEC Board and painted it. We look the other way, our building inspectors aren't doing their jobs equally. I think it's time this city start treating people equally. Thank you.
All right, and to the credit, Mrs. Klein did forward me an email asking the same question, Noel, do you have any comments about that as well? So she did do that.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director, so the Building Department did go out and look at the materials, the materials are in compliance with the Building Department and the building code because the garage doors are still behind them, so they are not a critical component of the wall structure, so they are a decorative feature, so that it is a, an allowable material.
All right, thank you.
So you're, you're telling-
Is there, we, we, we-
I got fifty seconds.
We had him, but there's no going back and forth tonight. He responded to your question.
Sam Neal, 514 King Bard Boulevard. Several comments. One is concerned about a roundabout at University and Fletcher. Having driven that at least daily for twenty-three years, I have never seen an accident at that intersection as described. I have seen accidents at the street that parallels the Flood Wall. That's a blind intersection, and that's where all the accidents that I have seen are. I cannot see what a roundabout would do to alleviate that accident spot. I think, I think the state must be commenting on that general area, not that specific intersection. Other comments that I have are, once again, about King Bard Boulevard. One is, how long are we gonna wait before we have grass seeded in our front yards? We're, it's all turning to weeds now. Who's responsible for cleaning up the parking there? Because it's still full of roots and branches and rocks, the neighbor still has metal sticking out of the dirt. Just lots of little things, but the biggest thing is, it's going to weeds now, the Boulevard and the parking. The other comment that I have was, I was told that the grade on the street sloped downward, but I noticed that after the rain we've had, there's low spots full of dirt and sand. So the slope on that is still, is not correct, the way I look at it. And the other question is, why, when work's being done there, it isn't on that street or any street in the city, why isn't it done right the first time? I don't care if it's the city's responsibility, the contractor, subcontractor, lots of little things, just don't get done right the first time, and then I have to come stand here or write emails about-
Yeah, you did.
Yeah, I do. I'm not shy. But the way I looked at it, is if it's not done right, it affects my property. And the comment that I have is that that sign on the corner, the King Bard Columbia Circle thing, when it's at an angle like that, somebody has to see it when they installed it. They shouldn't have to have me sending an email to get it fixed. Somebody has to take responsibility, whether it's the contractor, the city, whoever has to take pride in what they're doing. And I just haven't seen it on this project. And if anybody wants to see pictures, I have pictures on my phone, that I will gladly email you if you want to see them. But everything's going to weeds now, in the corner, on the corner of Fletcher and King Bard, we've got weeds that high. And it's, you know, I'm gonna be selling a house in a year, and I want it done right. And I don't want to lose twenty thousand dollars because it's a mess.
I'll, for the other three, four, I think we fixed the sign, right? And then I'll have Jamie give you a call for a couple of those other areas, I think I got your number. All of them. All right, yes, sir.
Jim Jabman, 224 Birch, see, I was wondering, when are we gonna do something with the properties at Williston, Lafayette, and finish Baltimore? Are they about ready to convert back to the city pretty soon? It seems like they've been out there a long time and nothing being done with them, so. I thought we were gonna build houses on them, get some tax dollars going in the general fund.
Very appropriate question, if you're, if you want to keep going, or I can have Noel to respond.
No, no.
Thank you, good sir.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director, we've been working with John Roof, previously that was under the Residential Development Partners Agreement, which was John Roof and Jim Ellis, they have since split apart. John is working with the bank who took some of the properties from Mr. Ellis to see what they've been wanting to do, we've been meeting with them as well to move ahead with that. John Roof specifically has some workforce housing tax credit, formerly the Enterprise Zone Program with the State of Iowa for sixteen new homes in Waterloo at many of these sites, so we're working with him and the state to put together an updated development agreement that meets the state timelines for him utilizing those tax credits, and then we'll work towards infill development in the city of Waterloo.
We have a chart on some of the investment that has been made or what's been brought back to the city.
Yes, John actually provided us with some information about, he's invested about seven hundred and fifty thousand on the west side and about seven point five million on the east side in housing projects, so we're glad to continue to work with him.
What is the tax base of the projects?
Of the sites he's speaking of, or overall? I mean, we can definitely put together a chart for the council to see the different sites and the different, the different areas as to what we anticipate and what's happened on, you know, the, the former Lincoln School site, East, Seventh, East Eighth areas, Lafayette, so I mean, there's a lot of sites that we've done, that we can use for comparables to show what's gonna be created on these empty sites.
Right, not to speak of the elephant in the room, but maybe at some point, Mr. Roof could come in-
I just saw John is here too, so if you have any questions for him.
Give us an update, or Mr. Chapman, he's right there if you want to ask, or maybe we can have an update in the future, so we'll work on that, work on that as well.
I, I thought there was a timeline, so.
All right, thank you, good sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Do we have Noel, Noel, while you're up there, Noel, while you're up there. Don't we have Lafayette back, isn't that ours now? Lafayette School?
Right.
It's still under the same development agreement, so we haven't taken any formal actions to change that existing development agreement or amend it to a new one, so we want to do that so we all formally can move ahead. So who holds title to it today? Right now, the Lafayette School site is in the city of Waterloo's name. Because there were some provisions in there about the different sites, and we convey them at certain points. Okay, that's what I thought, thanks.
Yes, sir.
John Sherbin, 1715 Robin Road. Little issue Saturday afternoon, as I was leaving town on Ainsborough, and I didn't, sorry I didn't get a chance to call the traffic department and talk about it a little bit, but they just crossed, oh, Ainsborough now, and in front of VGM, there's a bunch of those sort of barber poles indicating that the road is narrowed down to quite narrow, and I was going down the road like I normally do, it's about forty-five mile an hour, across the intersection, right in front of the Quick Trip or Star, whichever, and I put some skid marks down, it was the first time I've put in a broadside at the guy in years, I sort of pride myself in the ability to defensive drive, but I couldn't figure out what happened. And I looked, and if you, if you spend a little time, you can see some stop signs, there's a four-way stop signs now, across that intersection. They're totally about as hid as you can possibly be behind those poles, they're sitting clear off on the other side of the curb. I'm not the only one that did that, there is a lot of skid marks and stuff down there. I was wondering if we couldn't get those signs either put in the middle of the road or someplace where they're more obvious. I was pretty lucky that I didn't hit that car, the car, you know, this is something that I didn't particularly plan on, there was nothing said, there's no little flags on the signs to represent, those signs are just little red signs off to the side. And second, I was sort of wondering a little bit too, you know, we spend a lot of money, and I hear a lot of stories, and I've watched a lot of things about various traffic intersections, and one of them that I've noticed is, you know, we had quite a, quite a debate about Orange, about their parking and stuff, and also about their intersections, well, how about Ainsborough with a gas station that does humongous business, and VGM who has unlimited bunch of people working, it's a great operation, and they all merged into the same intersection. That was very, in my mind, sort of not planned well, there's room to move the intersections out, move to do something different. We continue to build and put Band-Aids on, and then worry about how we're gonna get our traffic after we do all of our development work. I was just wondering maybe if we couldn't get that into our planning a little deeper about traffic movement and/or like these intersections, because now we're gonna spend about two hundred fifty, three hundred thousand dollars putting a set of stoplights in that may or may not have helped anything. Thank you.
Thank you. And I, I want to say we, we do a little planning prior, but Sandy, Sandy has heard your comments, Mr. Sherbin, and I will get out to take a look at the skid marks and duly noted on the other portion of it, so. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring up that, something that's happening in Waterloo this week, starting tomorrow through Thursday is the Iowa Downtown Conference, which is gonna be held at the Waterloo Center for the Arts, and it has numerous speakers coming in, last year it was held in Sioux City, and this year we're hosting it, and unfortunately, I don't think that too many people have heard much about this, but one of the things that's gonna start this out is, tomorrow night there's going to be live entertainment at the amphitheater by Jay Allen, who's somebody who is in the region, very local and an up-and-coming country music person, and I don't know if people have heard about him, but it'd be worth going out seeing, but other than that, there are numerous different sessions that are occurring in the Center for the Arts, there's tours that are gonna take place, including a bicycle tour, there are things that are going to be happening as, as part of this conference, and I would encourage everybody on council to go to this conference if you haven't already made plans to go to it, and people out in the audience to take part in it, it's for people who are interested in downtown Waterloo, interested in preservation, interested in the preservation of your local infrastructure downtown, economic development downtown, and it promotes downtown Waterloo, so please make a point of being there, starting tomorrow through Thursday. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? Yes, sir.
I did just want to mention, following up with what the young lady at the podium brought up, when unfortunately former Councilman Schimp announced his resignation, I, and I think possibly one or two other council members indicated an interest in taking a look at all the options, and one of the options being making an appointment and starting that process, which was done maybe twelve years ago, I think, when Reggie Schmidt was appointed to the City Council. So anyhow, that was brought up. Originally, we thought that was gonna be on the agenda tonight, I believe you chose to move it to next week because of the City Clerk not being here this evening, which is fine, I just know that there are people in the room that have indicated an interest in potentially looking at this position, and there are other people that I and other council members have gotten emails from that have an interest in that, and so I just want to make sure everybody does understand that is still a conversation that's gonna take place, and I did also request that Representative from the county auditor's office join us next Tuesday night for that conversation, because I do think there's, this is not an everyday occurrence, and it seems like the last time we talked about this, things went in a couple of different directions, and, and again, no, no inference on the City Clerk, City Attorney, anybody else, but I think having somebody here from the county auditor's office makes good sense, so I did invite somebody to be here next Tuesday night.
And just for the record, we held a work session prior to the council meeting, because we had to move expeditiously to make some things happen, so there were no questions last week, we had a work session. The information that we did receive was information that was worked in conjunction with the county auditor, as well as communication directly with the state, so I don't want to leave it out there as if there was no conversation about this prior to that, but we held a work session on the very thing, and the information that we provided was information that we got from the county auditor, so. And that provided all the options and the dates and times that we had to have decisions made. Anything else, council?
Okay, make a motion to close the hearing, receive comments, and place on file.
Second. That motion's been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right.
Okay, make a motion to receive the consent agenda, place it on file, approve it with the dollar amount included in 1A1 in the amount of three million one hundred and seventy thousand one hundred and three dollars and ninety-one cents.
Mr. Mayor, before I second that motion, I would like to raise a question about an item on last week's agenda, the resolution approving the three-year agreement on the city audit, that I think there may have been some misinformation or lack of information on that resolution, so I would like to request that we bring that back for a discussion tonight.
Okay, so, 'cause that, should that have gone on the agenda? This is consent agenda now? Was that?
I thought this is where we normally brought it up.
No, we bring that up on the, amend, you know, to, to bring that back, but not the consent agenda. The consent agenda is, do you want to separate something from the consent agenda, but we can't add anything to it? Mr. Zellifer? You, you, you awake? Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, my, from having gone through this before, once we've approved the agenda, the agenda is there, and we've already approved the agenda for tonight.
And there's also, so this portion is the consent agenda. If it's possible to try to work it out, where you, Michelle and I, or whoever wants to sit down or something, I can get something set up this week, if that would be-
That'd be great.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. So I'll second that motion.
All right, there's been a motion made with the second, Madam Clerk? I mean Deputy Clerk, roll call, vote.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
All right, thank you. I want to remind you about number three on there as well, we're going to try to do the Labor Day kickoff with fireworks again this Friday, so.
There's plans to try.
Uh, something like that. All right, number two, public hearings.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Item number two is a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing, and that's for the anaerobic digester number three cleaning project, contract number nine five three.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, the hearing is now open. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council at this moment for an anaerobic digester cleaning project? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to close the hearing?
Second.
That motion's been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second, council, questions on this item? Madam Clerk, Deputy Clerk?
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes. Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution authorizing to proceed.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second, Madam Deputy Clerk?
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file, instruct the City Clerk to read bids.
Second.
That motion was made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, Madam Deputy Clerk?
On our first estimate, in the, our estimate was in the amount of sixty-five, five thousand dollars. Our first bidder was from NutraJet Systems Incorporated from Hudson, Iowa, they provided a five percent security, and their bid was in the amount of sixty-three thousand fifty dollars. Our second bid was from Metro Ag Waste Injections Systems Incorporated from Breeze, Illinois, they provided a security of five percent, their bid was in the amount of seventy-four thousand eight hundred dollars.
All right, thank you. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution and authorizing bid to NutraJet Systems Inc. of Hudson, Iowa, in the amount of sixty-three thousand fifty dollars, and approving the contract bonds and certificate of insurance for the anaerobic digester number three cleaning project, contract number nine five three, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, Madam Deputy Clerk?
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Number three, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on the 2018 Fall Stump Removal Project.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to the Fall Stump Removal Project? Going a second time-
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
No.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Like to make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing to proceed.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. Madam Deputy Clerk?
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.